... meeting, and if you would join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome. Wow, we have quite a few folks out there tonight. That's good. That's a good thing. First item on our agenda is citizens' comments, but before we start with the citizen comments, I'd like to just make one statement. We're working through the American flag situation that we had here the last few days over the weekend. I think you've probably seen some emails or some Facebook, and there's a lot of rumors going around. We're pretty much want to nip those in the bud. We're working with everybody involved, and we're not regulating the American flag or how it's used. I just want to let you all know that. And we have some other issues down there, but they don't have anything to do with the use of the American flag. So we are working through it. I know we even got on the regional news, and I didn't, I wasn't able to see that. I happened to be in Gig Harbor meeting last night when the six o'clock news came. So I just wanted to let you know, give us a week or two, we'll straighten it all out, and we'll, we'll be better for it, I think, because we'll have had the debate. So, anyway, oh, go ahead and open the mic up for citizens' comments. We'll have three minutes to make your comments at the beginning of the meeting. There's also an opportunity for three-minute comments at the end of the meeting. So, please, nobody signed up, so... No, Mr. Karakas, you did too. Sign up. Come on, come on up. No, I'm sorry, you are somebody. And if you lift the mic up so you can be recorded?
It's good. I don't need a mic normally.
Well, we do for the recording purposes.
Um, I am Fred Perikas. I own the bike shop and a couple of buildings downtown, and I just came to comment tonight that we, in the words of Cool Hand Luke, "I think we have a failure to communicate here." And I noticed I called this morning, I was talking to the state guys about possibly getting a lease for some things on the sidewalk, and everything was burning up down there, too. They'd already heard all about it and had seen everything. So it was quite a thing. Mine is not going to speak to that point, although it's associated. Basically, for the past about 12 years, one of my things has been that it's been (sigh) the sign and the handling of signs downtown has been very arbitrary. I have some words, arbitrary, inconsistent. I had murky down there, but it's more inexact and confusing, the interpretation of the code ordinance and what you can do. And virtually, everybody down there has a different opinion. In fact, I guess the sign ordinance has been sort of rewritten and written over a little bit, and the code enforcement officer seems to be the keeper of what the latest interpretation of the sign ordinance will be, which, again, like I say, has been arbitrary and inconsistent. And this thing downtown with the flag was just the kind of final setting on this. And I am saying that I am really happy that there's going to be a sign ordinance rewrite in the works. I've talked to Mr. Bond, and I'm, I think that it's a good thing. What I would ask is that we have, have a, sit down with the, with the merchants, because we also have a vested interest. If our shops are successful, we collect taxes for both the state and their Department of the Road and for the city and your work. And so it behooves everyone to make our businesses successful. My feeling has been, it's been a little bit of a roadblock for us. So, in consideration of this, number one, priority should be public safety. This is the job of every government, is public safety. The second thing is, I believe that we need to assure a positive business environment downtown, as far as the signage and encouraging things and all that. And I think that that's where there's been some inconsistency, and I look forward to working with our leased business community, working with the people that are doing the signs. And I think that probably gets me close to three minutes. Thank you very much. I'll look forward to it. Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. McCary, and then, and then I'll get to you.
Sir?
Mr. McCary, I think, sign.
I have some information. My sister was glad to help me to pass out to each one of you. I'm here in regards to the Endosseo Village project. The front page of this is a, the letter that I sent to Stephanie Andrews to the planning department on January 23rd regarding my concerns. And from conversations I've had, it seemed like nobody is aware of any of these things, so I thought I'd let her address you about them. When this property was purchased from me, this right-of-way on Blueberry Road, there were some conditions to that. It was, my drain field will be taken out, so I have, it says, "A sewer resident on West Sound..." Well, wait a minute. Let me back up here. "Assessors and assessors will be responsible for all associated fees in connecting Mr. and Mrs. McCary residents to the West Sound Utility District sanitary sewer installed in Blueberry Southeast. This includes demolition of existing system." Condition two was they would cold-stack the logs on a property selected by me. They would tear down the existing fence, and I would replace it. This was with the easement. Then with that, there was also a temporary easement that was granted at the time, which has expired, which needs to be addressed. And it had some conditions with it also. There are going to be some cutting and filling on that project that will extend beyond the right-of-way. So I gave temporary easement for this to take place while the construction was instructed, and then it will revert back to me again, this easement, temporary easement. So that was granted. There was, if any of my properties destroyed or obstructed, it'll be returned to its original condition. I won't be held harmless. I get 30 days' notice, because I have livestock in that field that I have to relocate before this project can start. And this expired in, what, well, I don't know. I don't have the date here. Oh, 2011, '12, 2011, so that has to be readdressed again. The reason I'm here is just because I want to make sure everybody knows this. I know we're going to vote on this project tonight, but I want to know who's going to be, who's the signs or the assessors of this? Who's gonna, are you guys gonna back this up? Are you, it's supposed to be on file, recorded by Molly Foster from the county. She recorded it, because she knew we were annexing into the city, so it's on record. I just want to know who's gonna, is somebody gonna do this? I don't want my drain field wiped out, and you're to say you're on your own. So I think this all needs to be taken into consideration, and some questions need to be answered before you can continue on here tonight. I tried to meet with the developer, but we couldn't hook up together, and so that's probably why I'm here tonight. So, anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
I am here to talk about flags. I brought some with me. I, Don Ryan, sorry, the manager of the Port Orchard Public Market and downtown business owner. As the manager of the market, I also, the whole entire market, also received a letter from the city. And if you're, have been downtown on Bay Street in the last, you know, three to six months, the market has been trying to encourage more people to shop and come in the building. So we put a couple flags in front of the building, which increased our traffic foot count by over 10 to 15 percent. It's helped us very well. According to current code, it's not available for us to hang those flags out there. So we were asked to remove them, which we believe that they're a pretty good indication of a good draw to downtown, and we have left them. And I've tried to work with Kathy Woodside, our code enforcer, who has ultimately, at this time, gave us until Monday, the 20th, or Friday, the 20th, to have them removed, or the market will start receiving financial penalties for it. And I've talked to her yesterday again about the code. She suggested that I fill out a permit, because the way the code reads right now is if it's an American flag, a state flag, a government flag, a POW flag, that is okay. If it's anything that says "welcome," "hello," "go to Disneyland," or, you know, "we're open," it's a financial penalty for us to have it out there, because the city's antiquated code on signs or flags themselves, you know, in my opinion, is a little out of date, but it just needs to be addressed. The public has very much endorsed liking those flags out there. It gives us a nice look in front of the building. And so as you do look at the flag issue, please look at, you know, I can put an American flag out there the way the code reads. I could also put out an Australian flag, and the city has no, nothing against it. But the second any business puts anything out there that says, you know, "hello" or "happy, come on in," it is a violation. The other thing I wanted to address, as you do look at that code, is the market council had, came up with a few ideas on flags, not just the two open flags out front. But on the front wall of the market, up on top, which would be about the height of where it says "Port Orchard Public Market," we had already ordered and purchased these little flags, which are maritime flags. They don't say "open," they don't say "for sale." They're maritime flags, very similar to what you see flying in front of the library. And we want to try to dress up the front of that wall in a little bit of a maritime theme that helps the look of downtown, gives us a more presence of inviting, welcoming scenario down there. These are very small flags. They're only 12 by 18. They would only take a small stick, and they would be permanently mounted across the crown of that market building. We have already looked at it, voted on it, and figured it would be a great thing for the city for us to put them up. But according to code, it can't be done. And I've talked to Kathy Woodside about it, and even if I filled out a permit today, she still could not authorize it, because the code is antiquated and will not allow it. So, please look at all those issues, because we would like to dress up downtown some more.
I, I, I'm sure when we get into this process, we will take the suggestion of getting the business owners and building owners down up here to talk about it right from the very beginning, when we start relooking at that ordinance, because you guys have a lot in stake, you know, a lot at stake, so.
The business owners, each individual vendor in there, has a lot at stake, yes, financially. But even since, you, we can count traffic coming in that building when the door is open and the flag is out. The second that door gets closed and the flags are getting pulled, because we're not allowed to put them out there, I can tell you the percentage of drop in foot traffic immediately. And every vendor in there could tell you the same thing. So, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? Raise your hand. Just because you didn't sign up doesn't mean, okay? All right, we had a, we had a tie.
I'm Dan Smallwood. I just wanted to basically encourage you guys to go through with this process of getting the signs and the flags taken care of. I don't have a whole big spiel here, but, you know, it's, it's obviously there's an issue downtown, and, you know, when I, you know, I, I think it was the gentleman here who kind of took offense to me, saying, "Well, you know, if you can't hang that flag up, then you should take them all down and take out the benches and everything else." And, believe me, I don't want that. I like the way it looks. I think that downtown right now is doing better than it's done for a little while, and, you know, the only thing I see is, you know, one building that probably needs to be renovated or tore down or something. But the flags, the, you know, the sidewalks, the, the things people are doing to encourage people coming downtown, they all make a difference, and they're doing a great job. And I think the town needs to work together and come up with a, you know, work on a maritime theme or do something to start, you know, really developing those businesses downtown. That's all I had to say, so.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Yes?
Good evening. I wanted to ask, well, this is regarding, once again, the Pancake House meetings that we have instead of having them here. And I see the finance committee is back at the Pancake House, and I'm disappointed about that, because I was really, really, really pleased to be able to attend a meeting here and have it be quiet and all of that. But what I'm requesting is, could we try with the utility committee meeting that's coming up, when Katie Isaacson is coming, our consultant, could we possibly try having it here? The last time I went to a breakfast meeting and Katie was there, everyone was eating, nobody was making eye contact. And I apologized to her afterwards, because to me, that's embarrassing. So I'm just putting it out there. As a citizen, I would like to see a more professional situation, and I just, I'm sharing that with you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Raise, there'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting for citizen comments. Okay, we'll move on to item three, approval of the agenda. Council members?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to add to the consent agenda. I make a motion to excuse Mr. Chang from this evening's meeting.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to excuse Mr. Chang. It'll be added to the last of the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Okay. Let the consent agenda so moved, or be so shown. Is there anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. All those in, or any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Thank you. That motion is approved, as amended, and now we're on the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the amended consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. That motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're at item five, presentations. And I would like to, to introduce a good friend of mine, Ms. Vivian Henderson. And Vivian, could you come up, please, and, and tell us about...
I'll read this. My name is Vivian Henderson, and I have Parkinson's. And I'm here tonight to ask the mayor if he would proclaim April Parkinson's Awareness Month. I think he will, but I'd like to tell you a little bit more about this disease. Parkinson's disease is a chronic, progressive, degenerative neurological disorder of the central nervous system for which there is no cure. As yet, no chemical, x-ray, study, blood, laboratory, or clinical tests can provide a definitive diagnosis. Whereas, as much as 80% of vital dopamine-producing neutrons in the brain are dead or grossly impaired before Parkinson's is detectable. Whereas, symptoms include extreme fatigue, tremors, difficulty with balance and speaking, walking, swallowing, cognitive and memory problems. Although existing medications and therapies effectively treat the symptoms for some Parkinson's patients in the early stages of the disease, and allows them to cope with this baffling and complex disease, more education and research is needed to help find more effective treatment for fewer side effects and ultimately a cure for Parkinson's. According to the Northwest Parkinson's Foundation, American Parkinson's Disease Association, National Parkinson's Foundation, and the Michael J. Fox Foundation, there are over one and a half million Americans diagnosed with Parkinson's and five million worldwide. Do you want to take it from there, Mayor?
Okay. "All the citizens can be aware of this," let's see, "and all, and whereas all the citizens can be aware of this debilitating disease and offer friendship and understanding and hope to its victims. I, Timothy C. Mathis, Mayor of City of Port Orchard, designate April as Worldwide Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in the City of Port Orchard, and I encourage all employees, citizens of the City of Port Orchard, to join in participating in voluntary activities to support Parkinson's disease education and the funding of research programs to find a cure." And I'll sign that tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, we should go on to item B, and Ms. Sharon King is here in the audience, along with Helene Jensen. And could you please come up and tell us about a lot of things going on this summer? I mean, you're very busy ladies, so...
Hi. I'm Sharon King, Chair of Fathoms of Fun Festival. Do y'all know what that is? We can do a flash mob dance tonight if you want. We got enough pretty girls over here to do it. We just made a presentation out at the Port of Bremerton, and I had a wonderful speech prepared out there, but I don't have one prepared here, because you're all very familiar with what we do. And we thank you for participating in our projects, especially the seagull splat run last year. The mayor looked wonderful with the green on him. And I'd like to introduce Scott Lucky. Scott is Chair of our seagull splat run, and you're approving hopefully that tonight, so if there are any questions, Scott can answer those for you. We're just getting ready to kick off Memorial Day weekend. That's our next planning phase of Fathoms of Fun. We will have a Pirates event day on Saturday, the 23rd. The 24th will be the Seagull Day, of which combining with the Chamber, Seagull Wing Cook-Off, the Calling Festival, and our seagull splat run, Pirate Saturday, Seagull on Sunday. So there's going to be a lot of activities taking place downtown Port Orchard. We're going to have beautiful weather. There's not going to be anything but gorgeous sunshine and warm weather, so everybody can come out and enjoy the festivities. Then we move on to Parade Weekend, which is June 27th, and we want all of you riding in the parade this year. And I don't know who our grand marshal's going to be yet. I don't think we've selected that grand marshal. We're going to have a meeting next week about parade, so we'll be getting ready to do that. Oh, I forgot the Easter egg hunt. It's coming up on April 4th, and we're just getting ready to stuff about 6,000 Easter eggs. We expect between 500 and 600 kids at the Jackson and Park Community Park up there. So it's going to be a lot of fun. We have a lot of volunteer organizations that work that Easter egg hunt with us, and it's fun. It's going to be more fun this year, because last year we had to hand out the eggs out of a trunk, because it rained. So we gave out the, all the stuffed animals and all the Easter egg hunts. The kids were gracious about it. They still showed up. We still had about 350 kids regardless of the weather last year, so it was still a fun, fun time. And then after the parade is over with, guess what? We go right into the Fourth of July fireworks. And I'm really proud to say that WAVE is our sponsor again for the ninth year in a row, giving us 12,500 as our major sponsor for that. And I would also like to announce that Yay, Gray Chevrolet came on board today as a community sponsor, giving us 2,000 for the fireworks. So we're very, very pleased with that. That just came on board this afternoon. He's already been invoiced, and we'll get his money. Hopefully, he'll be a continuing sponsor from here on out for a long time to come. Concert series will start on June 4th. I have to acknowledge Columbia Bank, though, as our proud sponsor of our parade. This will be the 11th year that Columbia Bank has sponsored our grand parade. And Kitsap Bank is on board for sponsoring concerts again this year. So we have some wonderful ongoing sponsors. Sound Storage gives us two big storage unit to hauls, to hold all of our investments that Fathoms has, garbage cans that we line the street with on parade day. We don't, well, we fill up your dumpsters too, but we do our own share of filling up our own dumpsters on parade day. And then Mile Hill Storage also gives us a storage unit to house all of our seagull splat stuff in. So it's nice that we have partners in business to help us out with what we need. And then we go into Festival by the Bay in conjunction with the Saints Car Club. We're working really well with them, and that's always a fun event. Then we go into our Chocolate Festival. You can have all the chocolate you want to eat come November. So the Big Gala event is on a Friday night. Then we go into the two-day vendor show on Saturday and Sunday for John Doe Public to come down. Kids come in, they play the scavenger hunt game. It was so successful last year, we're going to do it again this year. And you get a sample of chocolates from all the chocolatiers, and wonderful vendors coming in to where you can stockpile on your Christmas presents, your birthday presents, your "just because I'm me" present kind of a thing. Buy yourself a present. And then we go, our very last event of the year is our Breakfast with Santa, that we partner with the Eagles. And the Eagles are trying to raise money for carpeting for their building, so we co that event with them. And Alma Haney dresses up like a cute little elf, believe it or not. He is in his elf costume. And the girls are all in elf ears, so it's just a fun event, great time, come in for a wonderful breakfast and help Fathoms support our programs. We work very, very hard all year long to bring you quality programs for the community, the visitors, and the boaters that come into our area. The Fourth of July, you know, houses about 60,000 people around this sound watching the fireworks. And I want to thank John for allowing us to use his little gazebo at Annapolis Dock for our splatting station. Speaking of that, we're going to have a pay-to-splat station this year. So if the mayor, he's going to be, he's going to be leading, Scott, you don't know that yet. The mayor, the mayor offered to do the lead and ride his bike in the seagull splat run this year. And so we have a pay-to-splat station this year, and you all can pay a buck and splat the mayor. Wouldn't that be cool? So we have lots of fun things planned. Our committee, our board members, we have 13 board members, and I can't tell you how many hours everyone puts in for this community, so we thank you. I want to introduce Helene, who wants to introduce the court. And get your money out. Don't be cheap. It goes to the scholarship program. They're going to sell you buttons and pins, and this is our once-a-year photo op with all the council, okay? Helene.
All right. Thank you.
Well, good evening. Thank you for us coming again. We appreciate that. So Sharon brings on all the events, but I bring on the more royal side of Port Orchard, the queen mom. So we are really excited this year. We have a brand-new program. We have our four royalty members that you know to love and dear our princess queen, and this year, instead of an ambassador, we do a duchess. But this year, we have introduced three junior courts, or three junior members, three junior princesses. And let me tell you, it's really changed the dynamics. We raised more money than ever for this year's pageant, and I look for this year to be pretty dynamic. So you're going to see us around Port Orchard in bigger and better ways than ever before. So without further ado, I'm going to let them introduce themselves, and once they introduce themselves, then they are going to hustle you, because we are going to sell our buttons and pins. So, without further ado...
I will start with, well, we'll just go down the line, so if you would...
Good evening. My name is Maria Hoy. I was junior contestant number five, and my platform was creating change throughout the community.
Hello, I'm Princess Madeline, and my platform is teaching.
Good evening. I'm Princess Ally, and my platform was Born Death But Born to Dance.
Hello.
I am Princess Tamara, and my platform was Americans for the Arts.
It's nice seeing you all again.
Hi.
I'm Duchess Sorie Andy, and my platform was why I wanted to be in Fathoms again, and why I would be a good mentor.
Good evening. I'm Princess Cheyenne. My platform was Angelic Noise, and this dealt with how I began to play the harp and what it will do for me and hopefully our community if I get the chance to play for all of you one day. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Queen Charlotte, and my topic was about the transformative nature of music and the power that it carried, and how it can really change someone with the aged and damaged mind and the really wonderful power it has with that. Thank you.
While they're hustling you for buttons and pins, I just want to reiterate that you'll get to see these young people, and you've seen them from every year's past, how they are young ladies and how they grow up to be really young...
That 50-year-old just fine?
... special adults, because they learn how to speak more eloquently, they learn how to walk, they learn how to address the public. And as you well know, you'll recognize them and learn to love them as your ambassadors. And as you well know, you'll recognize them and learn to love them as your ambassador to Port Orchard. So I really greatly appreciate you guys welcoming us and allowing us to do this. The other thing I do want to reiterate, too, is we're here to support you. So you, have you have an event coming up? You need to make sure you come to us and ask us to help and do what we can to support your event. And then after you girls get done, if you can stand up front because we have a picture, oh, they're hitting the mayor up.
Four of the metal ones? Do you have four of them?
I know. You should have them all.
You out of those?
It's like a war. It's like a war.
Yeah, you can just, just, just owe me four of them. You owe me that. Oh. They were out of metal ones. Do you have any more?
We have. Beautifully enamelled this year.
I know it. I know it. Yeah.
They're reinforced.
I gave her 20, so I get, what, how many?
That's what you just need.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Two of one and one of the other, I guess.
I've got my Fathoms one on my little rotary thing that I wear every week, but I haven't seen anybody buy that.
The metal ones? How much are the metal ones?
I'll take an idea of the full.
You out of those? Can you grab one? And how much are they? Okay, I want a metal one, please, if you can do that. Do you have change? Okay, thank you.
I'm going to have to wear that all year, I guess.
How much? Do you have pins? No. Woo. Good job. Okay, okay.
Thank you. You have yours? Yes, you do. I need to make sure everybody gets one.
Thank you.
But I'll do that when we have more time.
If you're going to go out in the car, might as well get two of them. How much are they?
The metal ones are $5.
That's fine. One of those.
Yes. Yeah.
No, 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 no.
Let's take a picture with them.
Whoa. He's fleshed today.
Can you stand behind them? Okay.
You know how I am about that.
I know. Shouldn't I say no?
Cheers, Matt. Step forward. That makes for a better picture.
Mayor Mathis, can I take your job?
Help me, Mayor.
Can you, can you, you want the job? I'll give it to you almost any day.
I'll run this meeting.
Okay.
Okay, let's, okay, you have to push this way. I'll see the center of the council. Keep going, keep going. Okay, come back, come back, come back. Just a pair more because you're too far out this way. Okay. Ready?
Wait, hold it, hold it. Can you take a picture, too?
Do you want a goofy picture or serious?
Uh, one serious and then one goofy.
You all have to be goofy with us.
We will, we will. We'll be goofy. So, but first, okay, so first, first we do the serious. Everyone, very serious, very serious.
Why is she so bad?
Serious, it's hard to figure out how to work with you.
That's right.
Yeah, there you go.
You can zoom in. Now, wait. Goofy.
You guys have to be goofy?
Goofy.
That's as goofy as I can.
Yeah.
The metal ones.
Okay.
Over here.
Thank you.
Over here. Over here, over here. It's right. Over here. Over here. Finish now. Over here.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Now, let's see, I already received one, so I owe you one back.
Boom, thank you.
No one I take to me. Thank you now.
Buy another pin.
These are my grandkids, for my grandkids. Thank you.
You want some?
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, pretty fancy.
Pretty fancy.
Sharon, just, just a couple of things. For not having a prepared speech, you did extremely well.
Oh, thank you.
And also, which I would have expected anyway, and also, we've already approved the seagull.
It's approved.
It's approved. Oh, well, thank you very much. May I have another minute?
You may.
I'm flipping the hat as Chair of the 125th Celebrate Port Orchard Anniversary, and I just want to share with you that we've got a great committee onboard. We're having a wonderful time. And what I'm finding that's so interesting is that the various groups that are represented on that committee, it is amazing how many resources there are coming out. It's phenomenal. So we have a lot of things planned for the city. It's going to be a jam-packed day on September 5th. The Save the Date card has gone to press. It's going to be out. We've got 250 of those coming out that we're going to be emailing to all the dignitaries that we've gathered on a list and giving you some to just hand out to your special people. Then the official invitation to these Save the Date people that we're sending this out to, we'll all get a personal invite. We're working on the opening ceremonies that will kick off here at City Hall at 10 o'clock. We're working on closing ceremonies at the gazebo between 5:00, 5:30, around in there, and the activities that are going to take place all during the day. We have the pavilion that we're going to be utilizing at this point for the marble tournament. Did y'all read about the marble tournament? Adults can play, too. And the other activities that we're going to have going on, we've got some spinners that are coming in. It's also going to be Art Walk Day on the 5th. So there's just a lot of activity planned for the 25th, of the 125th anniversary. On another note, when we celebrate the 150th, I don't know that I'll be here to chair that event.
All right, thank you.
You bailing already?
All right. South Kitsap Fire and Rescue. Chief, come up and tell us what this is about, please.
Good evening. My name's Steve Wright. I'm the Fire Chief for South Kitsap Fire and Rescue. I've been following the court around. I think this is the fourth time, so it's a tough act to follow. And I make the mistake of taking my pins out of my coat pocket each time, so I have quite a collection at the office now.
So you get to buy pins again?
But what I'm here to speak to tonight is, South Kitsap Fire and Rescue has a ballot issue coming up in April next month that will be put before the voters here in South Kitsap. And the Fire District's been out trying to share information on that issue and get it in front of all the different groups, and of course, the City Council is one of the areas that our Fire District is very much covering your, your city and the whole South Kitsap area. So real brief, our, our agency has our EMS levy on the ballot next month. It's a renewal of a ballot issue that's been in place in our community since the 1970s, and it funds our emergency medical services, which is about 70% of the work that the Fire District does here in South Kitsap. It's a renewal of the, the issue at the existing rate. Currently, we're at 50 cents per thousand, and we're asking to renew it at that same rate for the next six years, as is allowed by statute. We have always had success with this in the past. It's a key foundational part of our budget, and we have it on there because it is a significant piece of what we do, and it's important. I, as the Fire Chief, am here just to share information on that issue, but I, I think the key components would be it's a mail-out on the 9th, count it on the 28th. It's a simple majority. We're asking for the same rate we're currently at to continue the service that we provide in our community. So, any questions, or I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Is there any questions?
Are you here for a photo?
You know, um...
Not with us, with them.
No, I'm good, thank you, though. And I'll, I have a few, just general informational fly-out, flyers. I'll leave here in case anybody would like those. And of course, everyone else ought to get ahold of me if you have specific questions. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it. Okay, item D in Presentations, Transportation Impact Fees. Mr. Dorsey, I'm going to turn the floor over to you to...
Thank you, Mayor, council members, members of the audience. So tonight is a, a second look, a revised look at the previous transportation impact fee presentation that we had, I believe it was the end of 2014. So Victor Salman is here, and he'll be giving an updated impact fee presentation. I believe we passed out a PowerPoint follow-along where you can take notes, and then also, I passed out the Revised Transportation Impact Fee TIP, or Transportation Improvement Plan, Six-Year Plan, that if you recall, it's, it's been modified considerably since what it looked like a couple of years ago. It's now a three-tier impact, transportation impact plan that has tiers one and tiers two are projects that are included in the TIP, and tier three are projects that are more long-range. Tiers two and tiers three are currently like unfunded, non-constrained projects, where tier one are reasonably constrained. So I guess with that, Victor?
Victor Salman with Transportation Solutions Inc., Redmond, Washington. So yeah, happy to be here. I think it was October, actually, last time we were here. Put a screen to come down. So Mark gave a little introduction there. So we did really take a relook at the last calculation and really trying to address several things, some concerns that staff had heard from you as the council, some feedback we got from other partner, other affected folks. Really wanted to look at refining the projects to be included in the impact fee, and also to see what that would do to the rate. Lost him. I'm back. We also, what I, what I'd like to call, we right-sized some projects. There were some projects that we made a little smaller, a little more affordable, based on what we think a more realistic projection of traffic needs would be. And then again, as Mark mentioned, looked at scheduling those. And then also, create some flexibility. You're moving into your comprehensive plan update. We'll be looking at transportation again there, and that'll have some, more impacts on the longer-range projects, fewer impacts on those shorter-range projects. So as Mark explained, we did, divided the project list really into three different sets of projects. So the tier one, the funding is reasonably secure for those, and impact fees would, would be providing really that local city match for those. They're currently in the planning and design phase now, are very close to moving towards construction. They currently make your, make up your six-year transportation improvement program that goes to PSRC and WashDOT. That makes them eligible for a lot of state and federal grant funds. Some of them include some of those funds. It does now include some of the McCormick Village, urban village projects that are in the city limits now. There are some others that are currently outside. And all of these in that tier one list, I think you have a copy of, are in the proposed impact fee calculation. So the tier two projects, not financially constrained, so we don't have all the funding in place. Some of them are bigger projects. They have longer planning and design schedules, so it's still important to begin the preparation for those. Actually putting yourself in a good position for future grants really requires that you do things like preliminary engineering and environmental work, and sometimes even right-of-way acquisition well before those projects move to construction. They're beyond that list, the six-year list that you would be submitting to DOT or PSRC, but, you know, next year and the year after, those are projects that might be moving into the tier one list as they move closer to implementation. So we did include those in the traffic impact fee so that they can be, we can use some of the impact fees for that planning and design phase, and then roll them into construction as they move into your TIP. So the tier three projects, less security about the available funding, even longer planning and design and implementation schedules. Most of them wouldn't be anticipated until 2024 or later, so we have some time to really, again, I think, do a better job of right-sizing those. Are they all necessary? Are they all the right scope? What kind of partnerships might there be with DOT for some of them that include state routes? They're, again, well beyond your six-year TIP, and so we left those out. So the growth share of costs remains the same from the October presentation. Essentially, we looked at the, the relative number of new trips generated by future growth compared to total trips that you'll have in 2035, and that's about 42% of those projects. Again, that growth share could change as you move through the comprehensive plan update. We'll be developing a refined traffic model for the city based on the Kitsap County model. We'll be able, be able to do a better job of predicting future trips, but we don't see a huge change. So then we looked at what that fee might look like for both, just for information, for the tier one projects that we would expect to see in six years and using a six-year growth forecast. Then we added the tier one and tier two projects and 20 years of growth, and that's what we propose to do. And then just to see how it compared, if we added the tier three projects in there, we get a significantly higher impact fee for projects, again, that we weren't as sure of. And so we thought it was most reasonable to use the tier one and tier two projects, resulting in about a $2,600 impact fee. So that's per PM peak trip. So of key interest almost to everyone is where does that put you relative to your neighbors and to the state? So the average impact fee in 2012, several jurisdictions have changed their fees since then, but the average in 2012, the last time the City of Bellingham does a nice comprehensive review every year, I think you may have a copy in your packet of that chart as well. So the average, about $2,800. The maximum is still the City of Sumamish. They adjusted it, but it's still $14,000. Kitsap County did increase theirs from a little over $500 to almost $700 this last year. And some local comparisons, Bremerton does not have a traffic impact fee. The City of Bainbridge Island also does not have one. TSI is working with them, and we had a council presentation a couple of weeks ago, and theirs is calculating in about that same $2,000 range, about $2,100. They have a smaller project list and a little less growth, but when I do that division, it ends up with a similar impact fee, and that's why you see the numbers not changing too much. City Gig Harbor currently has a $2,100 impact fee, but they have just, they're, we just had their, let's see, public hearing with the Planning Commission on their transportation element. It's a little more expensive, so we'll be looking at adjusting that impact fee as well, so it'll likely go up a little bit. The City of Polesbo charges by daily trips generated, $283.50. So just kind of to be it, be comparable, a single-family house generates about 10 daily trips, so it kind of equals a $2,800 per PM peak hour trip rate. And as I said, Kitsap County, $676. So you're, with this new calculation, slightly below the state average and kind of right, very similar to the other jurisdictions. As I was looking at some of their codes, one thing to keep in mind is that the traffic impact fee is often not the only impact fee they're paying, and there's a lot of variability in school impact fees. I think the school impact fee on Bainbridge Island is $400, $4,000 per single-family home. So it's not just the traffic fee, but it's kind of that combination. Some jurisdictions have connection charges for water and sewer that also get added on. So to do a true comparison, you really want to look at kind of all those costs. But if, from a traffic perspective, you're just a little below average. So what that might look like for potential developments that occur in the city, so that a single-family home generates about one PM peak hour trip on average. That's actually all the trips that are going in and out of a subdivision is where that comes from. So 100-unit subdivision under this scenario would pay about $260,000 to almost $261,000. Multifamily units generate fewer trips per PM peak hour than single-family. It's about .62 PM peak hour trips versus one. So they would, a 100-unit apartment complex would pay almost $100,000 less. And then typically, we would put adjustments in the impact fee ordinance and the rate table for mixed use, and your comprehensive plan on the land use side is looking at those types of more compact, sort of small centers. Those tend to generate less traffic. There are some procedures in the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE manual, about how to adjust... It's about .62 PM peak hour trips versus one. So they would, 100-unit apartment complex would pay almost $100,000 less. And then typically, we would put adjustments in the impact fee ordinance and the rate table for mixed use. And your comprehensive plan on the land use side is looking at those types of more compact sort of small centers. Those tend to generate less traffic. There are some procedures in the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE manual, about how to adjust for that, and it can range from 25% fairly easily up to even 35%. So the same 100-unit apartment complex that was in a well-planned mixed-use setting would have impact fees of about $121,000. The other area is the larger retail stores. So this big-box retail, 100,000 square feet, so that's kind of the newer, large-size Fred Meyer-type stores. The small Walmart neighborhood stores are still about 100,000 square feet. So it's a big discount store. They generate about 1,000 trips at the driveway, but retail has what we call pass-by trips. Not all the trips to retail are brand-new. A significant proportion are on the road already. That's why they like to locate on arterials. And so they get a discount in that ITE manual for that, which is about, I think it's about 36%, which should be that 376 trips. So they would get charged for 669 new PM peak hour trips. It's pretty rare that we see a big box on a site by itself now. There's usually some other retail around it, so they also typically get some adjustments or credits for what we call internal capture, a trip that might go to the large discount store, and then there's a coffee shop or a dry cleaner or something else next door. We give everybody a break for that shared trip interaction that occurs there. But just with the pass-by reduction, a big box like that would pay a little over $1.7 million in impact fees. An important thing to remember is they will get credits for any improvements they make in frontage that are on the impact fee list. And what we find is these big boxes typically locate on your arterials, and very often their frontage improvements are in the half-million to three-quarter-million-dollar range, and they actually get a credit for all that work because they're building some of your impact fee projects. So it's not always all cash out of pocket. The other thing is when they do their traffic analysis for concurrency, they might find that they're causing a level of service failure at an intersection nearby or an intersection farther away. You could use the impact fees to correct those, or you can also ask the developer to make those improvements. And again, if they're on your impact fee project list, they'd get credit for the expenditures there. They also get credit for right-of-way that they would donate along their frontage. So we talked about those, got a little ahead of myself. So again, credits, dedication of land for the projects that are necessary and included on the impact fee, and then any construction of improvements. And then we talked about the mixed-use adjustments. And then there are a lot of unique land uses that are not in the ITE manual, and so we usually allow for an independent process for them to, for instance, provide a count from a similar facility. One land use that almost always does that are banks now. The trip generation characteristics for banks have been evolving as we go to more electronic banking, and the rates in that ITE manual are, still have data from when everybody went to the bank on payday and cash to check in the drive-thru, and we're actually finding that rate going down. So what that kind of developer would do is they do a small study, they do counts at a similar branch in another jurisdiction and say, here's what, you know, our bank branch does in Bremerton, we think it'll behave similarly here, and you calculate an impact fee based on that. There are also adjustments for the existing uses on the site. If a site's being redeveloped, you would only be charging impact fees to the new trips on that site. So if there was a parcel that had one home on it and they made it 100-unit subdivision, they'd get credit for the one home they tore down. They'd pay impact fees for 99 new homes. And then the next steps in terms of implementing the fee, once we agree that that project list is the reasonable list and the fee looks about right, is the ordinance that actually puts it into action. There are a few things to think about there as well. We need to be specific about what it applies to. You can grant exemptions for certain types of uses that are considered to have a broad public purpose. Some agencies, for instance, wouldn't charge a fire station for the new traffic a fire station generates or a police station. A lot of agencies give a credit for low-income or affordable housing. A key thing to remember, though, is when you give that credit, you can't charge the other development that difference. That goes to your side of the balance sheet, so you'll have to come up with more local funds to make up that difference. So maybe a bigger grant or a bigger transfer from the general fund. So that's why the requirement is it has to have a broad public benefit, because if it doesn't, you're giving a gift of public funds by giving them a credit on their impact fee. So that's a fairly important policy thing that comes in the ordinance writing part. And we talked about impact fee calculations. And then things that might change the impact fee in the future, so more growth can do a couple of things. More growth does equal more potential fee payers, more traffic that's generated, and if we don't need to add more projects to support that growth, then the fee may not change much or could go down. If we have more growth, but it requires more and bigger projects to support it, that could result potentially in increase in fees. And then more growth planned well, which I think you're very well on the path to, which I think is a good reason to kind of leave the tier ones out, tier-three projects out for a little while. More growth planned well actually could have more fee payers and fewer projects, which then results in a little less for everyone to pay with a more efficient system. Same, similarly for annexations, as you annex additional areas, we want to look at, there's a new group of fee payers and a new set of traffic impacts that may occur from there. The traffic is really typically there already. The growth that would occur outside your city often is still driving through and not paying, so as you annex, you have an opportunity to capture some payment from that growth that's going to affect your roadways anyway. And then adjusting for inflation is a fairly, fairly simple thing to do, but a lot of agencies forget to do it. You can do it sort of automatically in the ordinance by tying the impact fee rate or your project cost estimates to a cost inflation factor. The Department of Transportation maintains one for roadway-type projects. It's a little different than the regular consumer price index. You can let that be automatic, or a lot of cities make that a council action annually to look at an adjustment to the fee if necessary. Actually, one thing I didn't put here is the timing of payments. Another policy decision to think about is how early do you want to collect the fee? There was an effort about three or four years ago to begin to defer fees, kind of give the developer a cash flow break. What that does is reduces the funding you have available to do that early planning for projects. So again, a road project can take three, six, 10 years to plan, design, and construct. So if you're waiting till the last minute to collect impact fees, you may be making it more difficult to do that early planning. Summamish, for instance, has moved the collection of their impact fee on single-family houses as late as the closing, which I think is kind of odd. I would not want to go apply for a mortgage and have a $14,000 unexpected charge show up that I would have to finance. So the earlier you do it, kind of the less ambiguity there is in financing projects. And that was, that was that. A lot pretty fast, but I'm here for questions.
This next step is my question, on timelines. So there are a couple of steps that are needed. The six-year Transportation Improvement Plan that's in front of you is going to need to be adopted and incorporated into your comprehensive plan. And so if council wants to initiate that, we would need to do that by the, I don't know if that's subject to the filing deadline. I think this is, we have an exemption for this, so we can amend the comprehensive plan either with our annual amendments or if council wants to take that on. And then the second part of that is bringing forward the impact fee and concurrency ordinance that is going to allow us to collect these and fix the problems with the existing ordinance for impact fees. And so we would need to schedule hearings. We would probably want to have a hearing on that. I don't think it's required. And those don't have to go through the Planning Commission. If council wants to take those on directly, we can bring them directly to you.
My two cents is, we know we've got a problem at Tremont. We need to find a way to fund it, and this is the biggest ticket item I think we've got for that funding mechanism. I think sooner versus later, we need to keep this ball moving. It'd be my two cents.
Well, I would add to that, that I think it goes beyond Tremont. We've got to start planning for Bethel and there's a number of things, so for moving it forward.
Excuse me. Nick, do we have, the presentation showed 100 units, whether it's single-family residence or an apartment building. It showed 100 units, and it gave us some ideas of dollar amounts. Do we have any idea the potential growth we're going to have over the next six years so that we can equate that to, I mean, do we anticipate, you know, 1,000 units in the city or, you know, what is that number?
Well, I think the rate of construction has been pretty stable over the last few years, with the exception of a couple of multifamily housing projects. I think a lot of the most developable air, developable land in the city on Sydney and Bethel is being held back because these improvements haven't been made, and no one project is really big enough to make those happen. And so I think putting these impact fees in place is going to maybe create a little bit more certainty for those developers looking to develop in those areas. But I think the rate of housing construction should be pretty similar. I mean, you know, 50 to 150 single-family homes a year. I think we've pretty consistently hit at least 40 or 50 over the last, even, you know, through the recession. So I think that's a pretty safe assumption, and then if we get a large projects, which we have, talk to some developers about some pretty big projects, that would obviously put a lot of money into the pot for this sort of thing.
And I think it's important also to recognize that, you know, the impact fees are just part of the transportation funding equation. I recently met with Kitsap County, Polesbo, Bainbridge Island, Bremerton, and so basically our KRCC members, and we're going to be looking at the potential in 2016 of doing a regional Kitsap County pavement management system and a transition plan. So we had the initial meeting, it looked positive. That will save everybody money and get rid of redundancy to get those. And as you know, once we have a pavement management system in the, and the transition plan done, that allows us to potentially get, do a better job with state and federal funding. And then Transportation Benefit District is something that we didn't talk about tonight. That's obviously a mechanism used more generally for, you know, maintenance-type projects. So my hope is that we can be moving ahead with the, this new number. As you know, we, you know, refined that number, and I think it's a more palatable number. But I guess I'm wondering how we, so I'm assuming we want to proceed with the transportation impact fees, but then look at, at some point, bringing the Transportation Benefit District conversation to the council.
Right. Mike, to move forward, as I understood what you said, Nick, is the council can move forward with the work we need to do on the ordinance now, but to, but it takes a comprehensive plan change to adopt the new tier structure, and that we can start now, but that only takes effect at the end of the year.
Well, no, that you can amend your tip at any point in time. I think that's, there's an exemption in our code. So if we want to rush that through the Planning Commission, we can certainly do that, but that, the tip does have to go to the Planning Commission. The traffic impact fee ordinance and concurrency ordinance can come directly to you, but they need to be done concurrently, or you'll have to adopt the tip before you adopt the fee. So I, we could take this probably to the May Planning Commission. We could have the comprehensive plan amendment considered and recommended back to the Planning Commission in June, or if the Planning Commission needs two meetings, possibly July, I think would be the earliest that you're going to have this ordinance unless we can somehow put a rush on it with the Planning Commission.
Yeah, I think we need to, because we're required to submit our amended tip to the state by July.
Yeah, July 1st.
July 1st, so, yeah.
My position is I'm in favor of moving forward.
So my, my question, I guess, for council on this tip, Mark and I and Alan have studied this pretty extensively, and I think we're comfortable with the projects that are on here and how they're organized. But does council need to study this list further, or, you know, do you want to take this to work study before it goes to the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Or do you want it to go to the Planning Commission first and then come back?
No.
I think, this is in a list that's new to us. We saw it at our last work study. I have no problem with it going to the Planning Commission, I mean, for their recommendation, and we're going to get a look at it after they've done their work. I think time is of the essence here. We've got to get this done to the state by the July 1st deadline. If we wait for our next work-study session, then the Planning Commission isn't going to get it for another month.
Right. As long as I have an opportunity to study it before we take action.
I still think we get another, another shot at it after the Planning Commission.
And maybe the thing to do would be to ask all of the council members, if you do have questions about this document, get in touch with Mark or I in the next week or two, and we'll, I think we can get this moving so that it can be heard by the Planning Commission.
And I think I have a question for Victor. So you actually, so you did your original transportation impact fee document. The council added additional scope and budget and time to extend. At this point, this was just your PowerPoint presentation, but you'll have your amended document, your transportation impact fee analysis to continue with. So at this point, it seems like you have everything you need now to complete that as a parallel track.
Correct.
We'll work on the Planning Commission.
The only issue would be is if any of the projects on the tip change, that feeds into the report. So he can't finalize the report until the tip is ready to be adopted, essentially.
Okay. So we'll get this on the Planning Commission docket.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Mayor, in the past, we've provided a little moment for the port to sneak out if you're starting to get a little tired or bored, and the part you've heard so far is really good, but the next part is really, really boring. So if you'd like to sneak out, this is the time.
Now would be the time.
Thank you for your patience.
Who was it that wanted to be mayor? Well, she's probably changed her mind. I'll talk to her later about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Number six, public hearing. Mr. Bond, would you tell us about that, please?
Council may recall on July 22nd, 2014, the city approved an assignment of a development agreement from Kitsap County that provides road mitigation fees from the Free Stone at Bayside Development. The original development agreement called for an escrow account at Bank of America into which the fee would be deposited. Contrary to the original agreement, Free Stone entered into an escrow agreement with First American Title Insurance Company of Olympia, Washington, acting as escrow agent. Approval of this amendment to the development agreement will enable the city to put in place a process whereby it receives all payments made to date as well as future payments of $1,059 each time the developer or builder obtains a new building permit from the City of Bremerton. The fee will separately be accounted as the Bayside SEPA transportation mitigation fee within Fund Number 111 Impact Mitigation Fee Fund. And you'll see that I noted in the report, we had hoped to have a signed copy of this agreement back from the developer, and I guess our assessment of this is the city needs this agreement approved, and the developer, I don't think, is urgently interested in, it's not a real priority for them because they're paying the money to the bank and they're getting their building permits. Nothing is holding them up. And so if council approves the agreement tonight without the signature of the developer, which they have reviewed this, they just haven't gotten the final sign-off on it. So we expect them to be fine with the language that we sent back to them after working on the language. But it's possible that if they want something changed, we'd have to bring this back to the city council. But we've been working on it since July, and we had scheduled this, expecting the document to be returned.
Is this not a public hearing?
No, it is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Okay. I will open the public hearing. Nobody signed up for the public hearing on this particular portion, but if you do have a comment and you'd like to make it, please raise your hand, be recognized. Anybody would like to comment on this? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll, council, what's your pleasure then?
I have some questions, but I'll make a motion first. I move to approve resolution adopting the first amendment to the development agreement between the city of Port Orchard and L-224-1 Bayside LLC.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Open the floor for discussion, Mr. Patanzu.
So we have this impact of, fee of $1,059, and we adopt our new impact fee of $2,600. I'm just curious how all this plays in. Is, are the projects that are for this impact fee part of our tier one, tier two? And then they now pay the 2,600 instead of the 1,100 or 1,000? How's it work?
This project is located in the city of Bremerton, so it is not subject to our GMA-based impact fee.
Right.
This is a SEPA-based mitigation fee that the county requested from Bremerton prior to our annexation. And so Bremerton was supposed, or the developer was supposed to pay a fee to the county prior to getting a permit from Bremerton to build any house within the development. And so now that we annexed the area in that intersection of-
Anderson Hill.
Anderson Hill and-
Clifton.
Clifton. That's now our project. And so the, we entered into an agreement already to get the money to come to Port Orchard, but it's sitting in an escrow account that was not the proper escrow account. And it's easier administratively for them to come directly to the city, pay the city the fee, and we'll give them a receipt that they'll take to Bremerton in order to get their building permit released.
Right. And so the, Victor touched on it briefly, that our current TIF and our revised tip includes the McCormick projects. That was a strategic decision after meeting with McCormick, that it made sense to not have a separate overlay district where they would have two. So this proposal moving forward is a unified citywide transportation impact fee with those projects on the McCormick Urban Village Transportation Plan within our tip. This project, as Nick said, is in the city of Bremerton whereby it was a county condition, that's why it's a SEPA mitigation-based fee, to go towards a, kind of a local project of impact. So we'll simply take this fee, put it in that fund, and we can include, remember, we already have a current fund of McCormick projects. That might be one of the first projects that we see completed because we could potentially have some of the McCormick fund existing with this fund and actually have a roundabout at Anderson Hill and Clifton. But they're kind of apples and oranges. It's a separate-
I think the short answer to my question is, it doesn't affect this impact fee because this is coming from a Bremerton project.
It helps.
Well, I might, I might mention that this is already in place, that they're already paying it and it's outside of this new agreement.
Our, it's a separate fee, so.
Yeah, this is just a, this is just some extra outside funding coming in towards that project.
Thank you.
I just, the map that's included with this packet-
Isn't correct.
Is that not right? I mean, I don't even understand. This looks like Blackjack Creek.
It appears to me that when this was being printed in the clerk's office, that somebody else sent a print job to the printer and a, one sheet of paper got mixed in with the stack. And so when that was printed, there's a highlighted parcel, I think it's Kentucky Fried Chicken. And so I was wondering that myself, but it sounds like an extra piece of paper got slipped into the stack.
I was having trouble with my mind.
Yes, you passed. Passed out a new map that's on your desk, so you should have, I think Councilmember Patanzu had requested that, so we distributed it.
Yeah, this project is just north of the ridge on Anderson Hill, on the west side of Anderson Hill. It was the project that had been developed with infrastructure, no houses, and it sat for a few years. And now they're starting to build houses.
I was just trying to deal with what I was looking at.
Okay. Other questions? Other discussion? All right. We have a motion to adopt a resolution. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay? That motion carries. Okay, let's see, we go on to business item, yes, business items. Let me get my. Adoption of resolution adopting development agreement for Andazio Village Development Agreement. Mr. Bond, will you tell us about this one, please?
The continuation from our February 24 meeting. The public hearing was opened and closed at that meeting. This pertaining to an application for a development agreement to amend the conditions imposed on the preliminary plat by Kitsap County Hearing Examiner for the Andazio Village preliminary plat. This development agreement is being reviewed concurrently with an application for a minor plat amendment application, which is set to be approved if the development agreement is approved by the city council. The Andazio Village preliminary plat was approved by Kitsap County prior to the city's annexation of the area. It was approved at about the same time as another preliminary plat located along southeast Blueberry Road. When jurisdictions consider applications which are constructed at the same time, they often consider the cumulative impacts of projects when determining mitigation. In this case, two projects located in close proximity were granted preliminary plat approval. Andazio Village was approved for 64 lots and Blueberry Ridge was approved for up more than 100 lots. The mitigating conditions under SEPA and under the preliminary plat approval were based on the impacts of both projects combined. Apparently, the hearing examiner didn't consider the possibility that one of the two projects would not be constructed. Construction on the Blueberry Ridge project has not been initiated and preliminary plat approval is set to expire in January of 2017. Andazio Village, the smaller of the two projects, has been bought by a developer who's seeking to construct the plat. The developer of Andazio is currently required to construct improvements which the county determined were needed to accommodate both projects, even though the impacts of the larger of the two projects will not be realized. The hearing examiner required improvements in the Andazio Village approval, which are beyond that required to accommodate the Andazio project in the absence of the Blueberry Ridge project. The primary intent of this development agreement is to reduce the number and scope of conditions of approval as required in the county hearing examiner's decision and to ensure that the requirements are proportionate to the impacts created by the Andazio Village project. The development agreement has been prepared to comply with the city's new development agreement ordinance, and the hearing examiner's condition, conditions were modified in the development agreement to eliminate projects, projected impacts of Blueberry Ridge as follows. And that includes, this would grant a project extension through January 30 of 2017. It would amend the preliminary plat conditions of approval, conditions of approval, including but not limited to, requirements for internal roads to conform to the city's adopted road standard and to facilitate the dedication of public roads to the city, reducing the requirements for off-site improvements, including the elimination of a traffic signal which is not required in the absence of the Blueberry Ridge project, and this was evaluated in an independent traffic impact analysis, and requirements for construction vehicle access to designate the city's preferred means of accessing the site for development. A provision for minor modifications in accordance with the city code. That was number three. The benefits of the agreement to the city which would result from plat construction primarily consist of the developers' improvements to the public right-of-way in the vicinity of the project and are summarized as follows. One, construction of ADA-accessible sidewalks and crosswalks between the development and Bethel Avenue. Two, half-street improvements, that includes sidewalk, curb, gutter between the project and Bethel, and paving along a portion of Blueberry between the development and Bethel. Three, left-turn channelization and improvements to the Bethel Avenue right-of-way at Blueberry. And four, the construction of 64 homes and the development fees associated with this construction. If the development agreement is approved, staff will complete the attached, or the review of the minor amendment application that was submitted by the developer and which is attached. The minor plat amendment application seeks the following amendments, and that is minor changes to the interior street geometrics, a change from public, from private to a public road. Three, reconfiguring the stormwater facilities, including the elimination of the central retention pond, and the placement of a pond at the northeast corner of the site. And four, revisions to the open space layout. Staff recommends approval of the resolution adopting the Andazio Village Development Agreement. And I should also point out that there's a fresh copy of the agreement that, it's actually a very poor resolution scan, but, and it was shrunk from legal down to an eight and a half by 11. But Councilmember Patanzu contacted me on Monday with a question about improvements to Ramsey. And based on that conversation and the understanding that we had with the developer, it was realized that a condition concerning Ramsey needed to be added to the development agreement. And so you'll see under Condition 25 on page seven, some additional language has been added. If you'd like, I also have a, another copy that includes the language in red, if you prefer to see it highlighted. But I think if you look at page 25, or I'm sorry, page seven, Condition 25, there's just one long sentence that's underlined, and that was the addition to the agreement. And the developer was willing to sign that. And so you have a signed copy before you.
Okay, I have a question. How does the various provisions of this, this early testified document, have you looked at all those and compared those with what we're proposing now?
Yeah, we, we have looked at this and it's, it's an interesting document because the, I guess the deed that was conveyed include conditions, but we have no record of the county formally accepting the agreement. And I, maybe I should defer to Carol because she's turning on her microphone.
Well, if there's a deed with conditions, and if those conditions are supposed to bind the county, the county actually has to sign it. So it doesn't bind the county if the county doesn't sign it, and the only person who has signed that deed is the property owner.
But, but I'd like to add that we are checking with Kitsap County to see if there is anything in their road department that is binding. But I could also point out that there was, you know, there's nothing in that, those conditions that are deal breakers. They're fairly standard. And my, my thought is that the, the plan that had been proposed, you know, originally through the county might differ from ultimately what the city's going to propose. It may not. But I would suggest that, you know, the city, if, you know, I don't have a problem saying that we'll honor those if they're required. We'll look at, just like we've done in other projects, we'll look at the redesign or what the ultimate design is on that, and there may be ways to not have to take the fence or not touch the drain field. If they do, that's a, you know, in the course of the project, those are, those are minor issues. So-
What you're saying is if, if Mr. McCary's drain field does need to be taken, then we don't want that to become his responsibility and it's the developer's responsibility. So how do we have assurance that that's what's going to happen?
Well, I think the important thing is that the developer is required to improve the road. And if adequate right-of-way doesn't exist, or if the construction requires improvement, that's up to the developer to work out with those individuals. And furthermore, the temporary construction easement that was needed, that's expired. And so if a new construction easement is required, they're going to have to go to that property owner or to some other property owner in order to get a staging area to do that work and also to guarantee access to their property through construction. So I think this is really a, a private matter between an adjacent landowner and a developer. And the, until we have a completed design, which we don't have a completed design from the developer at this point in time, we don't, we don't know what is-
Right.
-going to be needed. With that said, though, the conditions that the county had put, or that the landowner had put in that deed, it sounds like they, the landowner tried to contact the developer but haven't had a chance to talk yet. That's certainly something that I suppose could be added to the agreement if that was what council wanted to do. But my recommendation would be that it be the responsibility of the developer, not the city, to make those improvements.
To me, the key thing is that the city will not issue an SDAP for this work or a right-of-way permit for this work until we have an approved design, that we have a temporary, if a temporary construction easement is needed. And that's a standard condition of the city. It's at that time that these issues, once they're determined, would be negotiated as part of the temporary construction easement. So again, I appreciate Mr. McCary's bringing this to our attention. Like I said, we will verify with the county if they have something signed on their part. But really, I say this is just, becomes a part of the design process and the city is not compelled to issue a permit to do those improvements and, you know, basically finalize the plat until this has been resolved.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Clausen?
I think your last comment was the key until this is resolved because, you know, when you look at this one document, the right-of-way deed, it appears that it was filed by Kitsap County. So at least some of these conditions that were addressed, some of it needs to-
Well, again, we, we're going to verify with the county. I talked to John Brand today and, you know, it would have been much cleaner if the county had signed that document as well, but-
Well, why would they not file it, or why would they file it?
File anything you want with the county.
Well, we don't, we don't know who signed, who filed it. It says on the top that it's supposed to be returned to the county, but we don't know that the county actually authorized that to be recorded or that the county even had knowledge of this document.
Right.
Well, the receipt indicates that the Public Works Engineering Department-
Exactly.
Mm-hmm.
You read the top of it, they're the ones that filed it.
Right. But again, you're, there's no signatory by the county on that document. So hopefully we'll find some sort of companion document. But whether there is or not, I guess what I'm saying is, is there will be a temporary construction easement needed, or there'll be, if there's impact to that property, when the final design is accomplished, that won't happen until the McCary's issues are resolved and, you know.
As long as they get it addressed, that's the important part.
Can I ask a question? So I'm hearing that what you think is that they're going to have to approach Mr. McCary for an easement. And I'm assuming during that conversation, he's going to bring up his secondary issue, which is the runoff. If they say that's too much problem for us to deal with, we're going to go to another property owner for an easement.
Well, I don't think they have-
I don't know. I'm just asking, you know, who, it looks to me like he did everything in good faith. And he's got some legitimate concerns.
I'm not saying they're not legitimate. I'm just saying that the development agreement isn't necessarily where that would be addressed. It'll be addressed within the department as part of the road improvement plan.
Is the developer here?
Yes.
All right. Simply, are you willing to work with him to resolve that?
Yes. This came to my attention when I walked in the meeting today, Mr. McCary-
Excuse me. Could you come up here to the podium and put your name, so we have you for the record, saying that you're agreeing to this?
Yes. Question. Hi, my name's Jim Urina. I'm the Vice President of Oak Ridge Homes. First of all, I'd like to thank the county for listening to us last month and this month and working with the staff. Yes, me and Mr. McCary had a conversation today. Last week, he reached out to me before he went out of town, and then I directed him to talk to my engineer, Mike Winnick, with Winnick Engineering. Looking at those conditions, I do agree to his concerns. I mentioned that to him when we were in a short recess. And as Mark said, all these items can be worked out during our application and design going forward. But the settlement agreement is pretty much the nuts and bolts of getting the first step. But I did, Mr. McCary can confidently say the same thing, but all those conditions I agree to.
Great. You happy, Jim? Okay.
Okay. That's all.
Great.
Thank you.
Yep. Have you been a motion on this?
No, we don't.
We do have a motion at this point.
We've just been labbing along.
Mr. Patanzu?
I move to approve the, a resolution adopting the Andazio Village Development Agreement with Oak Ridge Homes.
Now we have a motion.
Second.
And we have two seconds. We have a motion and a second discussion.
I just want to apologize that we didn't get this done right a month ago. I'm sorry it took this long, but I'm glad we've got it done.
Because I presented the same thing January 23rd. Right, what, what did you, you know?
Okay.
I have, I have some questions. I presented some questions earlier today to Mr. Bond and Mr. Dorsey, and I just wanted to review a couple of them. In the document, we have changed most of the areas where it says county and changed that to city. We did not do so under Condition 11, which has to do with stormwater drainage, and I didn't know whether council wanted us to be consistent throughout the document so that any place where it said county, it was updated to city. So that was one of those. On Condition 25, I thought we were told at the February 24 meeting that ingress and egress from Geiger and Ramsey onto Sedgwick would be in- egress from Geiger and Ramsey onto Sedgwick would be included as a condition, but that has changed in this document, and that.
My memory serves me that Geiger was dropped off the list because the other prop, that came from the other property, the Ramsey improvements.
Correct, and that's the answer that Mr. Bond gave me, is that access improvements requirements on Geiger are being eliminated as a condition in lieu of access via Ramsey consistent with the traffic analysis. So that was just a point of clarification for me, from what I remembered. The question on finishing, it's Condition 20, again, Condition 25, where the language was put in to improve Ramsey from where the West Coast Fitness ends to Blueberry, that that language has been added back to 25. And then I also asked for a copy of the traffic analysis, and that was forwarded to me, and my other question regarded the McCary's situation, and that's been resolved. So with those particular issues answered for myself, I can support the agreement.
Okay, any other discussion?
I, I heard one question in there which we didn't answer concerning the language about the city and county. Did you want us to address that?
I would prefer to see it consistent throughout the document.
Well, and so based on the email that I got from you and responded to a little bit earlier this afternoon, I did draft a revised version that's in red line that, that shows language added to Section 8B, and so if you'd like to look at that language, you know, you could make a motion to adopt that as an amendment to the agreement. It's entirely up to you, but I'd be happy to pass it out if you would, if you would like to look at that version.
I don't know that I have to look at it. I can trust you, I think.
Okay.
But I would like.
Why don't I read it to you? So if you turn to Page 4 of the agreement, Section 8B, the proposal that we drafted would change 8B to read, and the first, first part of the sentence is not changed, but you'll see it here in a second. "The parties agree that the preliminary plat conditions of approval as set forth in the hearing examiner's decision, Exhibit A, Conclusion Section, shall be modified such that all references to county or Kitsap County shall be changed to city or city of Port Orchard, and in addition, the decision shall be modified as follows," and it proceeds to list all the changes. So if you'd like to make that amendment, we can have the developer sign this version.
The maker of the motion would accept those changes?
And if he did and I did, then I would accept it as well. Now, Mr. Clausen, you had your hand up. Do you have another?
Yeah, and I guess I'm just curious, Beck, you mentioned Condition Number 11, and I go from Condition 2, 4, to 12.
Yeah, I know, but there's no.
Well, I'm talking about the Kitsap County Hearing Examiner, that was the conditions that were put forth in 2007.
In the document that we were given tonight, the developer's agreement, there is no Condition 11, so.
We're adopting these conditions with those, with the, the changes, okay?
If you go to your packet, you'll find the original hearing examiner decision, and if you go to Condition 11 in the original hearing examiner decision, you'll see the reference to county. So essentially, any, any mention of county in the conclusion section of the original.
Oh, I appreciate that, I just couldn't find Condition 11 to find the county.
Gotcha, okay.
Because the agreement assumes all of the conditions from the hearing examiner with the changes that, that we've made.
Okay, any other, any other discussion? All right, the motion on the floor is to move to approve resolution adopting Adazio Village Development Agreement with Oak Ridge Homes. All those in favor?
And also including the language that Mr. Bond brought forward relating to changing county to city of Port Orchard.
Consistently throughout.
Throughout the agreement.
Okay. And includes changing to the city of Port Orchard every reference to Kitsap County?
The vote right now is to vote on the initial motion, correct?
Yes.
Well, actually, no, it was.
We amended the initial motion.
The friendly amendment to the motion, so we're, we're gonna do this then as an emotion, as, as, you know, the main motion. So is that, everybody in agreement with that? So all those in favor of the motion, with the word changes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Okay. All right, we're at approval of contract with ESA. Mr. Bond, could you tell us about this one, please?
Yes. The city is part of its 2016 comprehensive plan update is required to consider best available science in developing policies and development regulations. To complete this requirement is detailed in WAC 365-195-915 and on the Department of Commerce HMS Comprehensive Plan Checklist, the city needs outside scientific expertise. Under the scope of work provided, the consultant will conduct, will conduct a best available science review and gap analysis, and will revise the city's comprehensive plan policies, the natural systems element, and will revise the city's critical areas code to reflect best available science. In early 2015, the city solicited proposals from three qualified companies listed on the city's consultant roster. Internal review concluded that ESA Inc. was most quali, was the most qualified responsive firm, and that city, and city staff began developing a scope of work and negotiated a fee for services. This project was budgeted in the 2015 DCD budget under professional services. The recommendation is to approve the contract with ESA Inc. for an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars to complete the best available science and critical areas code review and update. And it should be noted that the contract submitted deviates by one word from the attorney's recommended language, and in the contract before you, the word sole, S-O-L-E, has been deleted from Section 12, and I don't know if the attorney wants to say anything further about that, but you should be aware, this is similar to a request that Mark had on a contract a few months ago.
As you know, the recommendation comes from the insurance pool's recommended language in this booklet that they promulgate for contracts, and it's stated there, so if you have any questions.
It's your pleasure, counsel. Yes, Mr. Counselor?
Move to approve the contract with ESA Inc. not to exceed thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Open the floor for discussions and comments.
It's, I just, I appreciate the attorney's work on this, like the other contract. If we can't get anybody to do the work because of this one word in here, I don't know what we do, so I'm comfortable with the language that we have.
My sentiments exactly.
Okay, all right. Seeing no other comments, then, we are going to vote on the motion on the floor to approve contract with ESA and Company not to exceed thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Item 7C, approval of contract with Andrew Spear Construction. Mr. Dorsey, could you tell us about this, please?
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. On February 13th, 2015, the city Port Orchard Public Works Department issued a request for proposal to three companies listed on the 2015 MRSC small works roster. By the 12:00 PM noon, February 13th, 2015 deadline, only one bid was received. The Andrew Spear Construction LLC bid was determined to be the lowest responsible bid at fifteen thousand and seven dollars, twelve cents. A summary of bids are received below with applicable tax. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute contract number 03515 with Andrew Spear Construction LLC for the Marina Park restroom security modification project, which is the removal and replacement of two steel doors and the, and interior modifications, in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand, seven dollars and twelve cents, with the contract term beginning April 1st, 2015, and the work substantially complete no later than August 31st, 2015. Please note that this is an unanticipated project and is not currently allocated within the approved 2015 budget, and that the alternative is to not make security modifications and to close the Marina restroom.
Yes, Mr. Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute contract number 035-15 with Andrew Spears Construction LLC for the Marina Park restroom security modification project in amount not to exceed fifteen thousand, seven dollars and twelve pennies.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Patonson?
I just want to, we've talked about this a couple months in a row with the Utility Committee. We looked at some other options that were much more expensive. I think you'd rather have a nice freestanding restroom, but it was cost prohibitive at this time, so felt this was the most cost-effective solution, and we feel that there is a need for us to have a public restroom in that area, so, Mr. Martin, hopefully you can find some money somewhere to fund this.
I'm sending an email to staff right now to do that, actually.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I have two questions, and the first one, again, was the financial issue, in that I know last, at our, was it our last meeting or sometime last month, we, we engaged someone to do some work for us on the pedestrian path, and we hadn't budgeted that item. It was some CIPA work or NIPA work or something, and we hadn't budgeted that item, and now we have this fifteen thousand. So do we have the money to pay for it? That's my question. My other question with this particular project is, it said the work substantially would be completed no later than August 31st. Can we get it done much sooner than that, so that it's open for the summer season?
Well, let me answer the first question first. So the, I believe, I'm not sure where the funding came for the additional base street pedestrian pathway work, but I know that the pathway is on our capital improvement plan, so that's a REIT-qualified project. This isn't on our capital improvement plan, so I'm not suggesting that the base REIT was paid out of REIT, because I'm not really sure. This project, yes, there's a chance that they could be done. As you know, we have a Sandy Can down there now, and there's a chance that they'll be done, but to, to think that it would be done, you know, before the season, I, you know.
I was particularly thinking the parade and the fireworks, there's so much activity down there then.
Right.
I was just hopeful.
Yeah, it would, it would be nice. It's already April. This, this year is Tempest Fugit, I believe, is the Latin for time flies, and 2015 is definitely going down that path. So I would like it to be done, but I, I can't guarantee it at this point. I mean, ordering the materials, the door, they're having to cut, cut a hole in the side of the concrete wall, and, I mean, it's gonna be a pretty extensive project.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other question? Yes, Mr. Clausen?
Another question, more general than anything else. Mark, do we ever inquire with, say, for example, the other two that did not submit a bid as to why they didn't submit a bid?
Um, no, we don't, in, basically, DJ's, well, she's, DJ's like a hound dog, good Alabama hound dog, and she, she calls and reminds people, she goes above and beyond.
Well, I understand, but it would just, I know when some federal contracts were obligated to call to find out why, so just out of curiosity, if we ever do that?
Feedback that I've received is, there are a lot of people that just don't like doing public work. They don't like having.
Then why are they on the list?
Because they'll just broadcast, well, there's, there's a certain size project. It's just like us with federal money. You know, we'll, we'll do, we'll borrow federal money for certain projects, but I think there's certain sized projects with both Wyman and Olympic Mountain, they looked at this and said, you know, for, for the amount of money, it's not worth, worth that. So they're on the list to, to get bigger projects.
Okay.
You know, it's, you know, prevailing wage and putting up bonds and performance bonds.
I was just curious if we ever asked to see if that is in fact a reason or if it's under.
Yeah, I mean, this, I know that Andrew's, I can answer it in the converse, is we didn't receive the bids, and then when I talked to Andrew Spear, he had those concerns. So I would put two and two together, and based on the comments we've recent, have received from other contractors, that really is an issue on these smaller projects.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or other comments? All right, seeing none, we're going to be voting on authorizing the mayor to execute contract 03515 in the amount of fifteen thousand, seven dollars and twelve cents. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you, that motion carries. Okay, the last item is Item D, has to do with council meeting minutes for March 10.
I move to approve?
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion, any other corrections?
Going to be abstaining, that was not present.
Let the record show, Mr. Clausen is abstaining.
As am I.
And Mr. Patonson? Okay, all those voting, please, to accept the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
And is there any in opposition? All right, and show the record, let the record show the two abstained. Thank you. We're done with our, our business items for tonight, and we'll go to reports of the council committees. Mr. Clausen, do you have anything to report?
Yes, we have a finance committee on the 27, 7:30 to Pancake House.
Okay, economic development, Ms. Ashby.
Our next meeting will be April 13th at 10 o'clock here at City Hall.
Utilities, sewer advisory, Mr. Patonson?
Utility Committee met March 13th. Probably the majority of the meeting was related to Well 10. Just a little, some minor updates here, all, the minutes are here, but one of the things we were told is we don't have as many options as we initially thought on Perry Avenue due to steep driveways and, we were thinking we were gonna get potentially sidewalk improvements and things, and it just doesn't appear we can fit all that stuff in the, in what we own there. So project's still moving forward, there's still gonna be a public outrage piece to the residents there, but, and, and they are gonna get a new street with this, but we just don't have as many options as we thought. Second item relating to Well 10 is water treatment, and we're, the consultant's working very hard to make sure that, look at our treatment options, so we can avoid another Well 9. It's the last thing any of us, I think, wants. We also had some, an update on the gap analysis. She will be back at our next meeting, which is April 17th, and we discussed the Marina restroom project that we approved tonight. So that's, that was our meeting, and the next supervisory committee meeting is on April 22nd.
Thank you. Public property, Mr. Cartwright?
Thank you. Our next meeting will be April 13th at 8:30 here in City Hall.
All right. Lodging tax is on the list, Mr. Chang isn't here tonight. Does anybody wish to make any report for him? No. Okay, we'll move on, let's see here. Festival chimes and lights?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report, okay. Have I forgotten anybody? Mr. Jared, do you have a?
Nothing for the waterfront, I have some on Keita that when you call.
Okay, why don't you start with that, then I'm right.
Well, we had our annual meeting and luncheon, and I think you were there when yours, and John was there, and Beck was there, they gave the state of the organization and plans for moving forward. Couple members went off the board, John Rose and Linda Brown from the Doctors Clinic, who've served well on the committee for a number of years. John gave a happy report to Paul's Bow about parking right up there. I doubt if he's gonna say anything about that, but Kitsap Transit is doing something up there. And so, yeah, we're off to another great year.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ashby, do you have any special report?
I do not. The next KRCC meeting is the first Tuesday of April. I will be attending that, and, yeah, and PSRC is the week after that. I haven't attended since our last meeting.
Mr. Patonson, anything new KRCC or?
I, Beck took over at KRCC.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
So I don't have anything to report there.
Okay, all right. Anyone else? Special committee, okay. Special committee, okay. Reporter, the mayor, let me go, I run really good piece of news, I like to read these, I received a call this morning from Roger Wold, McCormick Woods Drive. Tony and Tom, of, those are employees for the city, had responded to assess a sewer issue at this location. His remarks were, "They are the nicest, most professional and helpful young men," that he, and he was very impressed with the way they went about their business. He wanted me to pass this comment on to their supervisor, Mr. Dorsey, and everybody else, including the council, that, we get a lot of these, and I try to bring as many of them as I'm aware of to you, so, I was really happy to get that. And in the last few weeks, I wasn't here the last meeting, but since then, I attended the chamber luncheon on the twelfth, and we, I presented a little prim, a primer about West Sound Alliance Group, and it's a very interesting group that just formed the last eight or nine months, and we're part of it, and it's, it's making a difference, I think, in Olympia as far as transportation projects, so I'll keep you posted on that. On Saturday, I attended a town hall meeting that Representative Young had here in, in the city's chamber, and it was very interesting. Was the first town hall meeting in a while I've been able to attend and not have to say anything at all, I just listened to him do it, so, he did a good job on it. St. Patrick's Day, I attended a social at Stafford Suites, and if you ever get a chance to go to one of their, they have a luau in the summertime, and they have St. Patrick's Day, it's a lot of fun, they, they have a good time there, and they had two fiddlers, Irish fiddlers there, and they played for us, so it was good. March eighteenth, I attended Exit Conference over at Housing Kitsap, where I'm on the board, and I've been to quite a few Exit Conferences, and this was one of the best, and they also, and the reason I wanted to even mention it is, they're doing a really good job over at Housing Kitsap, and the auditors from the state themselves admitted this is one of the most complex audits that they've been through, because they have so many different financing, ways to finance things, and, and different state and federal financing schemes that, they, they, the audit team seemed glad to be leaving, and, but they, they came out with glowing colors and, I mean, you know, the glowing accolades for Housing Kitsap, so I wanted to mention that. I went to a spaghetti dinner for a fundraiser for South Kitsap Junior ROTC, it was a lot of fun, the Eagles sponsored that. There, I met with a man named Joshua Sewell, and he's representing the Elton Goodwood Foundation, and that's something you're gonna hear more about as time goes on, in fact, I would like him to come and do a short presentation to you about what this foundation has plans for, and it surrounds the South Kitsap area and the baseball diamond up there. He's, he's a very dynamic and well, well-versed young man, I, I just wanted you, him to come and, and talk to us, maybe next month we can have that.
Goodwin is that longtime Kitsap coach, baseball coach.
Yes, baseball coach, and he passed away two years ago, and this is a memorial for him, but it's also a way to celebrate all of the young people that have graduated from South Kitsap from way back, so, anyway, you'll hear more of that, and I'll, I'll get him to come. Port Orchard Crab Feed was this last weekend, boy, it was truly a success, I, I've been to several over the years, and I can't remember one that was, what, that was as full and as fun as this one, and I, it looked to me like it was successful as far as...
Standing room only.
Yeah, it was really, really good, and there was a good time for, everybody was having a great time. I attended a meeting Monday night at the Bethel Grange, and they wanted me to send thank yous and accolades to the city council and for staff, because they think we're doing a great job with the, with, you know, different activities downtown, and they especially called out the chimes of lights this year as being the best ever, and they, they just wanted me to say, "Keep up the good work." Port Orchard's becoming a really great place to, to not have to leave, we can come down here and enjoy a weekend, you know, so, anyway, I wanted to give you that information. Last two things, we kick off our summer festival season basically with the first farmer's market on April fourth, and it also, at the end of the afternoon, it's the first art walk, and it's about Impressionist, the art walk is. We don't care if it's raining, I don't think it's going to be raining, but even if it is, bring an umbrella, please come downtown and help us, help us celebrate the first of the season, the first art walk of the season, and also the first farmer's market downtown. That's Saturday from ten till when you get tired and have to go home, five, five-thirty, some, six, something like that. So, anyway, that's my report for the night, and, let's see, where are we going from there? Department heads, we'll start with you, Mr. Dorsey.
Yeah, just some very quick project updates, so the Bethel paving repairs, the pre-bid was Friday, and that was fairly well attended, and we had some good questions, so that, those bids, sealed bids are due April third, so, very anxious to see with oil prices right now, just how much we can get done this year. The, you may have heard that there's a, kind of an out-of-cycle PSRC emergency action funding request, I'm not really sure what happened to initiate that, PSRC's being fairly tight-lipped, but rest assured, we, I will be submitting an application, I don't know what, what's available, how much, but we'll put Tremont forward. The Bay Street pedestrian pathway, we are moving ahead with that monumentous, monumental task of items that we have to check off to obligate that funding. We did submit our extension request to PSRC, so now we have until December to get that submitted to WashDOT. We had a meeting with WashDOT on the NIPA update, that went fairly well, so, we're moving ahead with all those items to get that money obligated. The, and then the Department of Commerce officially issued our extension for segment four, the funding for the pedestrian bridge, because that was supposed to have been done June thirtieth, and they've also given us an extension to December, so, at that point, you know, we'll, because we have the Bay Ford issue, so, it looks like that's moving ahead, and having that six extra months will be important, so, that's that.
Okay, Mr. Martin.
As mentioned, finance committee meeting on Friday morning, and then when I left downstairs, all the money in the bank was where it was supposed to be, so, I'll sleep good tonight, and you should too, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bond.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the council, specifically council members Petonsoo and Ashby for getting out to me well in advance of tonight's meeting with their concerns and questions, and all of you do that from time to time, but it's really helpful, especially with something as complicated as these development agreements, so, thank you for giving me plenty of heads up on that, and I think it just makes everything move forward more smoothly, so, thanks.
Okay, Ms. Morris.
No report.
Okay, Ms. Rennerson, no report, okay. All right, we're at the citizens' comments, second opportunity for citizens to come up to the mic and, and give us their comments, so, there's no sign-up sheets, raise your hand, and we'll take you in order, okay? Yes, sir. Good evening.
As well, most of you probably know, I'm Jerry McDonald, live over on the other side of the water over there in Bremerton, and I just wanted to come and talk to you about a couple of things. Last, probably two, three weeks ago, Bremerton decided that it was time to join Visit Seattle, and I'd kinda like to encourage you folks to do the very same thing. Visit Seattle has a giant arm all over the world, and for five hundred bucks, I think, would get our, our monies, you'd get your money's worth, and by joining them, I think we can build this, this network of being on our side of the water, you know, when you get to Coleman Dock, you can either go to the right, or you can go to the left, and obviously, we want them to go to the left, and the more things we have over here to do, the better it is to get those people over here, and there's a million people in the summertime that come to Seattle, and one of the main tourist attractions is in the state of Washington is that green and white boat that comes to Bremerton, and, and then, my, my friend Roger Brooks that talks about, for every hour it takes you to get somewhere, there ought to be four hours' worth of things to do, and I think we have probably four hours to do, things to do in Bremerton, but there's still a lot to do over here, so I think, you know, they can stay longer, and that, that green and white boat that Mr. Clausen drives back and forth here is, it should be an absolute tourist attraction, the Carlisle Two should be one of the major things that people want to come for, it's a great museum that you drive across, you know, you come over here, and, and I think part of our problem is we are not marketing the things that we should be marketing, and so, that's, that's one of the things that I just wanted to talk to you about, and certainly encourage you to spend five hundred dollars and join Visit Seattle with us, Turner Joy is a member, and I think there's a, a group here that's talking about it or already has. My thoughts are, the more people that we have that are part of that, the more things we can talk about and encourage them to help us, and they're willing to, so, anyway, that's that, and, whoops, the, the last thing, or one of the last things I want to talk about, I'd like to encourage you to do some serious consideration about this Friday and Saturday night, the Carlisle Two trips. I think there's a great opportunity for you, and probably more so for you than us, but I'm not saying it's, it's a two-way street, but the more we market, and that really, over the two or three years that we've had that boat running on the, on the Friday and Saturday night, I don't believe we've marketed it very well, and I think we need to sit down and market it, and I think maybe we could do it jointly, and it would help both of us to do that. As I said, there's a million people in Seattle, and not to mention, your citizens wanting to go over to the ballgames in, in the summertime, that's a great thing, it, it's an easy thing to do, and the last thing I wanted to, wanted to do is to invite you tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon, or tomorrow morning, eleven forty-five over at Sea Films. I've got another Roger Brooks webinar, and every Wednesday, I have a webinar over at the Sea Films Theater unless I'm out of town, or, or the, the Stetsons are out of town, and tomorrow's is Finding Your Niche, Not So Easy, is it? And that, that's his, what he presented last week over in his network, so, I invite you to come if you have the time, and that's really all I have to say.
Actually, citizens are welcome also.
Yes, yes.
I mean, as many as you can sit in that auditorium.
Well, we're limited to about a hundred and fifty or two hundred people.
Yeah, so, if you're a hundred and fifty-one person, fifty-second person...
We'll get another chair.
We'll figure it out.
So, yeah, you're invited.
All right, thank you.
Is, um, joining an organization, a tourist-type organization like Visit Seattle, a lodging tax-eligible expense?
I believe it is.
You, you think it is? Do you think it is, Brandy?
I believe it is, but the city has not put in an application to use that fund...
But we could.
For that, yeah, yeah, you could do it for 2016.
And I will just insert that Explore Port Orchard, which is a consortium that includes the Port Orchard Bay Street Association, the Chamber, Fathoms of Fun, Sydney Gallery, and the City of Port Orchard sits at that table too, and that organization has joined Visit Kitsap. Or Visit Seattle.
Visit Seattle.
So, what I think we need to do is join all of the people, all the parts that are members of Visit Seattle over here, and, and start requesting or demanding that we get some, some action over here. There's, there's a lot of things to see over here, as you well know.
Now that we've got several partners already, if, if, you know, we can add a few to that, we could have them come over, and we could show them an awful lot about the, the area.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in the process of trying to arrange another concierge tour, I don't know when, I think it's gonna be the end of next month, somewhere in there, I'm still hoping for details, but that's what we're planning on doing, if I can get it all put together.
Don't forget us, don't forget us.
No, I'm coming over.
We'll write on your coattails.
I'm coming over here.
Okay.
So that's, you know, that's the one thing, I think we need to partner better.
Right.
And, and we're not.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Yes, sir.
So, this is a little green letter, Greg, come on, you wanna talk too much?
The red one.
The red one, so when it starts flashing, okay. Well, my name's Matt Murphy, I'm the executive director for the Port Orchard Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to echo what Councilman McDonald mentioned, but specifically what, what Beck mentioned, that the Explore Port Orchard program is a consortium of a lot of organizations here in South Kitsap, Port Orchard, that want to push the area. The one kicker is, is that while we've got the LTAC funds, I know that the Port Orchard Chamber of Commerce from the county was totally shut off from county LTAC funds, Fathoms of Fun was totally shut off from county LTAC funds, the Bluegrass Festival was totally shut off from county LTAC funds. Visit, or, Visit Kitsap received two hundred and nine thousand dollars from the county, okay? South Kitsap received zero dollars from the county to, to, to push this entire area. So I'm hoping that next year, when the LTAC discussion comes up, I know, I think Explore Port Orchard got eighteen-ish thousand, give or take a few, and, and the Chamber got some from you guys, and, and Explorer got eighteen from you guys, that's what we're using to join the, the Visit Seattle, and that's what we're doing to try to market the area, but as you can imagine, you know, between the two of us, that thirty thousand dollars doesn't go very far when you're plunking down five hundred dollars here and, and five hundred dollars there. So I just wanted to echo, as much cooperation as we can get amongst all the different organizations is great, I love the foot ferry, I just talked to John about it the other day, four hundred thousand people in two thousand and fourteen rode the foot ferry back and forth between Bremerton and Port Orchard, so a lot of people rode that foot ferry back and forth. Whatever we can do to promote that and continue to grow that is something that we need to look at doing, so, thank you.
Okay.
Brian Pietro, instigator conniver and hometown troublemaker. I would like to ditto what Matt has said. Port Orchard has never got enough bang for its buck for the LTAC money that has gone to the Kits, Visit Kitsap or the Visitor and Convention Bureau. We need to fund the local effort a lot more so that we can get more bang for our buck for the South Kitsap area, and we need you to support it, because we don't get the money as a community from the south, from the county government, we need that. I'd like to talk about flags and banners and A-signs. I've been in the sales business all my life, I sold furniture down on Bay Street at Parks Furniture, if any, anyone can remember Parks Furniture. Banners and flags sell things, you see them on cars, you can't limit these guys to decorate their buildings with flags, that gets attention, and that creates revenue for the city, and what kind of revenue does it create? Sales tax revenue, the bread and butter of your government. Look at that sign ordinance carefully, and remember that the property owners on Bay Street own the land that those sidewalks sit on, and they have a right to promote their businesses off those sidewalks, and that's a historical fact, and I can prove it. Last of all, Mr. and Mrs. McCary, March sixteenth, seventy-eight years ago, my mother was born in your rental house, right on Bay Street with a midwife there. So, that's what I have to, oh, one last thing, if Kitsap County wants to solve the funding for roads, you've got to pull out of the Puget Sound Regional Council, designate the Kitsap Community Council as the funding arm for federal dollars, and then we can divvy out the money that the federal government gives for roads and stuff locally, and not have to compete with other communities across the water. We shouldn't be doing that, that's what you need to do as governments, you'll have more money than you'll ever thought you could get by designating them as the funnel for federal dollars. That's it.
Thank you.
Brian. Brian, I just wanted to remind you, the last time you were here...
You got the flag.
Has it left?
Thank you, sir. I hate to follow that.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
Anyway, I want to thank, you know, you guys probably know I'm not a regular visitor here, but I have, I don't know why either, you know, I don't know why somebody wouldn't want to do this a couple times a month.
Yeah, why not?
Wait, I want to thank you all for your cooperation and listening to me, I have learned... I have learned a few things. I think that maybe in the process of developments like mine, where they have citizen input, maybe if this was looked at a little bit closer, that you wouldn't run into these problems. My letter was turned in on January twenty-third, and I had copies of those, of that deed of the right of way and the temporary easement. I don't know why it wasn't found out till tonight, but I want to thank you all again. And on a personal note, I want to congratulate the mayor, his youngest daughter, and my sister's son are having a grandchild in six months. Congratulations.
I almost forgot, I've got eleven other ones, you know, I'm going, oh, yeah, 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 I know what you're talking about. They'll be the best. Newest and the best, yeah. Anyone else? Okay?
Great.
All right. No executive session, is it all right to adjourn? Is everybody agreed? All right, we stand adjourned.